Good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the Lake County Planning Commission meeting scheduled for January 12th, 2023. We will call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jim, can we have verification of legal notice?
And legal notice has been determined on each matter on the agenda.
Thank you. First thing we will take up is approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is typically things that are done on a routine basis. Two items that we will be, that are in the consent agenda are consideration of the adoption of Assembly Bill 361 findings authorizing teleconference meeting during a state of emergency, as well as approval of the December 15th, 2022 Planning Commission minutes. Do we have any discussion? No?
Commissioners?
Yes.
I would like to request that we pull the AB 361 separate for consideration because I have an update on that as far as state law.
Okay, so let's see if we can approve the minutes for the December 15th, 2022 meeting.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve item 4B on the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. So in regards to Assembly Bill 361 findings, Nicole?
Yes, so if your commission, your commission does at this moment have the option of re-adopting the AB 361 findings, either as they have been, or continuing them either as they have been, or amending them for current conditions under the emergency. However, I wanted to update you and let you know that the COVID-19 emergency status for the state will end on February, at the end of February, February 28th, I think. And AB 361, the rule that comes out of that requires an emergency and findings particular to that emergency. So the current findings that you have relate to COVID-19, and they would not be applicable at the end of February. So AB 361 would not apply unless there is another emergency for which their findings could be made that would require potentially remote attendance by the commissioners. And again, those, that particular set of findings would have to relate to the emergency that has been declared either by the county or the state, or in some other way. Excuse me. And, and remote attendance would have to relate to those findings and the emergency that they are based upon. Absent that, the remote attendance rules that apply would be the traditional Brown Act remote attendance rules, or as of this year, a new set of rules have been adopted under AB 2449, which would allow for remote attendance of commissioners during meetings, for meetings during a year, for emergency circumstances for the individual commissioners or just cause. There are a number of criteria, and again, I can provide a written, a written summary of this and these elements for you at the end of February, so that you have something to refer to should an emergency or something come up for you individually that you think that this 2449 set of rules would apply to, to where you would attend remotely. They are a bit involved. There are a number of criteria and requirements, so it might just be easier to rely on the standard Brown Act remote attendance rules and not attend the meeting or notice and the location that you're going to be, which is the traditional rules. You'd have to notice the location that you were going to be remote attending from. You'd have to provide access to the public in that location, and there are a number of other criteria. This particular 2449 set of rules, however, would not require that you do that. It would not require that you make that, the remote location known. It would not require that you allow the public to attend. However, all of the following criteria would have to be met in order to allow for that. I apologize for my cough. In those circumstances, at least a quorum of the actual commission would have to be present here for that meeting. So no more than two members could have, could utilize 2449 at any one given meeting. The member would have to provide an option, I mean, not the member, but the commission would have to provide an option, which we are, my understanding is we're going to continue to do through Zoom, but provide an option for the public to participate remotely by phone and internet, and be able to comment in real time, which we do through Zoom. I have no indication that that will be ending. But again, that is a criteria for this, for this set of rules. The individual member would have to notify the, the commission, provide a disclosure as to what it is that is the emergency, or what, what occurrence would be just cause for remote attendance. It doesn't require that if you are sick, or there's some other personal information related to the, the occurrence that requires you to attend remotely, needs to be shared with the public, but, but some kind of description as to why, so that we can do an analysis and put on the record what the emergency is, or when in fact, just, what would meet just cause. If you do run into a scenario where you think you would need to remotely attend, and this rule should, that you think this rule would apply, I'm more than happy to work with you. You can contact county council, and we can go through the reasoning and come up with a description that would meet the 2449 requirements and still maintain your privacy, if that's, if that's a concern. During the meeting, the individual member who was remotely attending would have to participate by both video and audio, and would have to notify the commission during the meeting at the beginning, give notice, or identify every other adult in the room, and explain that their, the commissioner's relationship to that adult in the room, or adults, depending. There is a limit on how many times it can be, 2449 can be used in a year. You may only use just cause reasoning for two meetings in a year, and a member may only participate remotely no more than three consecutive, consecutive meetings, and no more than 20% of the regular meetings within a year for the individual, for the members. Excuse me. And, so it's, it's an involved set of rules that might apply in certain circumstances. For example, if there wasn't an emergency declared, if AB 361 didn't apply, and it didn't apply to a particular emergency like flooding, for example, or, and one of you was unable to travel out this way, it is possible that 2449 might, might be applicable in that circumstance where you couldn't travel, but you wanted to attend remotely, you just couldn't make that distance, then we might be able to make that work. The commissioner who has that would have to notify in advance for every single meeting that this set of rules is used. So it's not a one and done for a certain number of days. Every meeting in which 2449 is triggered, the particular commissioner who wishes to use it would have to notify the commission ahead of time, or on the morning of, and then the commission would make a determination at that time. So every single time, and then we would have to keep track of the permissible number of times that remote attendance is allowed. And as I said in the beginning, it is a little bit involved, so it might not be worth it for, for most circumstances. But again, it is an option for remote attendance should something unpredicted occur. Family emergencies. Attendance of, attendance for, it does actually cover attendance for things like conferences. So if commissioners were at, for example, a planning commission training, that would qualify, and you could notify and then be given permission to attend remotely from a conference, so you wouldn't have to miss a meeting if it straddled a planning commission week. But again, it's something that needs to be determined ahead of time. If you have any questions, county council's office is, is more than happy to assist.
Okay, so do we, do we need to come to any type of consensus as far as currently with 361 up until the end of February?
If your commission finds that, that there's still, that the emergency is still applicable here, and it is necessary to make those findings for, to allow for remote attendance during the emergency as it continues into February, then yes, your commission could make the AB 361 findings today, and that would last until the end of February. Well, it would last for 30 days from your findings here, but the option of using it for COVID-19 would end February 28th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole.
Ready to make a motion. I move to approve a consent agenda item for a consideration of adoption of Assembly Bill 361 findings authorizing teleconference meeting during a state of emergency.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that information, counsel. Let's see. Okay, moving right along. We will open up public input. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public wishing to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. I don't see anybody in chambers wishing to approach the podium. Jim, is there any hands in the Zoom room? Okay, no hands in the Zoom room. One more glance around chambers, and there is no one. We will go ahead and close public input and move on to our first timed item. First item is a public hearing continued from December 15th, 2022. Consideration of proposed major use permit UP 20-90 for commercial cannabis cultivation for a total of 51,500 square feet of mixed light canopy area, and a mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS 20-109. Applicant is Cresta Properties LLC. Project location 6267 Kelsey Creek Drive and 6245 Gold Dust Drive, Kelseyville, APNs 007-013-23 and 007-013-22. Good morning, Byron.
Good morning. Right, Madam Chair, members of the commission, as you correctly stated, this item was last heard on December 15th. It was continued at that time over concerns of the ability of the planning commission to make the use, make use permit finding, specifically finding number six regarding violations of chapter, chapters five, 17, 21, 23, 26 of the Lake County Code. Staff has remedied that concern by submitting condition number 30, which requires the applicant to submit building permits for all accessory structures, including as-built remodel permits for the existing garage and accessory dwelling unit, and exempt permits for the agricultural storage structures, and any demo permits for anything to be removed. The condition is for, to have the applications submitted within 30 days, and these permits be obtained prior to operations. So with that, with that stated, it's staff recommendation that you approve the project and adopt mitigated negative declaration with the additional condition of approval.
If I might also add, we have already received the applications for the building permits that's listed in the condition.
Okay, any questions for staff regarding this item? Or, excuse me, from the commission? For staff?
Are we just, are you going to re-present the staff report?
Was not planning to, no.
Fine. No, no need. I do have one question about the hydrology report. On page five, it says that less land will be allocated towards agriculture due to the product, product yield of cannabis. Therefore, a lesser area of land will be, will need irrigation resulting in a reduction of water use. And then on the very next page, there's a table of estimated use, and the use in fact increases slightly. And I just was confused that on one page it says there would be less, and on the next page it would in fact increase. It doesn't change my view of the application, but I just wondered if I was misunderstanding something.
They are, they are reducing the amount in agriculture, however, I'm reading it the same way as you are, so.
It's not an enormous increase.
Yeah, it's not. But you're right, they are decreasing the amount of cultivation, however, I do see that additional.
Total water use.
Total water use according to the table you're.
Okay. If there's no further comments from the commission, I will open it up for public, public input on this item. If you'd wish to speak on this agenda item, you're welcome to approach the podium, or if you'd like to raise your hand in the Zoom room, you are welcome to do so at this time. Okay. Any hands in the Zoom room? Okay. Richard Durham, we're going to unmute you and give you the opportunity to speak on this item.
Well, my name is Richard Durham. I'm a local Realtor and a cannabis cultivator. I'd like to see this project through. They've been really diligent, and they've showed up here every time, ready to go. And for unseen reasons, they've been held back. They're zoned to be in the right area. Their project seems to be well engineered. I see no reason for them not to. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, no other hands in the Zoom room? Okay. One last glance around chambers. Nobody wishes to speak on this item? Okay. We will close public input and bring it back to the commission for action.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the planning commission find that the mitigated, mitigated negative declaration IS 20-109 prepared for Cresta Properties LLC, for the property located at 6267 Kelsey Creek Drive and 6245 Gold Dust Drive, Kelseyville, further described as APNs 007-013-23 and 007-013-22 will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated January 12th, 2023.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I further move that the planning commission find that the amended major use permit UP 20-90 applied for by Cresta Properties LLC on property located at 6267 Kelsey Creek Drive and 6245 Gold Dust Drive, Kelseyville, further described as APNs 007-013-23 and 007-013-22 does meet the requirements of section 51.4 and article 27, section one of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions, and with the findings listed in the staff report dated January 12th, 2023.
All second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the commission's final determination. Just a side note, I'd like to thank staff and the applicant for their patience and attention to detail on all of that. Moving forward. Next, we have our 915 item. It's a public hearing continued from December 15th, 2022. Consideration of proposed parcel map PM 22-02 to divide a 34 acre lot into four parcels with one 14 acre remainder, and mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS 19-09. Applicant, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians. Project location is 7130 Red Hills Road, Kelseyville, APN 009-021-07.
Commissioners?
Yes.
If I may, before you get into discussing this item, this particular property has a prior approved permit associated with it that is currently involved in litigation, an active litigation case. So I would ask that this particular item be continued so that that case can be settled or concluded before any further permits are approved on this particular property, or at least this permit is approved on this property.
And is that going to be a date uncertain?
I couldn't possibly give you a definitive date, and if I tried to give you a clear indication, it probably would make sure that, it would ensure that, that we don't reach that date. But we, it's not, it's not new litigation. We're hoping to conclude it at the beginning of this year, so this month or next month would be, I mean, you always hope that it will be quick, but we, we are working, all parties are working diligently on it, and that has been the, the focus was this month or next month.
Okay. Thank you. So that being said, we need a motion to continue this item?
I would, yes, please.
Okay.
That is my request.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Was it to a date uncertain? I move to continue this item to a date uncertain.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And our next item, I believe is timed for 9:30. We have eight minutes. Director Turner, would you like to maybe do your update now to kill? Okay, excellent. So it's 9:22, and our, our presentation is scheduled for 9:30, so the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a few things to update the planning commission on, and then we also have our cannabis program manager here. He was here.
I'm here.
Yes. To, to speak to a few items specific to cannabis and give you updates on that. As I'm sure the commission is aware, we have a number of nasty viruses wandering around, and thankfully, the option to control the amount of remote work is left up to the director. And so we have implemented a number of Corsi Rosenthal boxes on, in the office, which is a really cool, way cheaper way of filtering the air than the big loud air scrubbers that we bring in for the fires. So we have a number of those doing what we can to protect the health of our, our staff on site. Simultaneously, I'm working with the management staff to create rotating schedules and increase the amount of remote work. One of the reasons for this is that according to our COVID policy, if someone is at work and tests positive and goes home, the entire department could be affected because of how contagious it is through the air. And so this is, this is our way of minimizing the impact, because we're, we're going to get sick. People are going to get sick. It's going to happen. So we're, we're sort of trying to be more nimble and keep the impact to staff at a lowest level possible. The priorities that the management staff is working on as they prepare these, these schedules is maintaining a presence at the counter for the public, so that we're not going to, we're not going to leave the public without their ability to get the services that they need when they come, as well as working with different departments regarding being able to use the trucks, like park their trucks over at court yards, and so they're not coming into the office. We're upgrading all of the, the tech agreements that we have for staff, so a lot of the clock in, clock out, and work can be done on phones or iPads. And all of this is to sort of get through the winter season in the best shape possible. So that's something we're working on. And a couple of things coming. The mileage reimbursement has been added to the next available board of supervisors agenda, so we're excited about that. And, oh, and Commissioner Brown, in case I forget, I have the reimbursement forms for you to sign while you're here. That'll be great. Then my last segment for update is something that's coming. At the last board meeting, they had a discussion regarding cannabis retail establishments, and they requested that staff work with the cannabis task force and the planning commission to come up with a list of options and recommendations specific to two aspects of retail. One is the level of permitting considered appropriate. As you know, we have kind of an inconsistent requirement of permitting. In C2, it's use by right, as opposed to a minor use permit in other zoning districts. So they would like us to discuss that. And then the second one is discuss options for the regulation of concentration of retailers in each community. So I will take that. Right now, the cannabis task force is still finishing up their work on the agricultural structure ordinance, which will come to you after that. And then after they're done with that one, we're going to move into this next board dictated priority and talk about that one. So that will be coming to you in the future as well.
Interesting.
That concludes my report, and I will defer, or I will pass it over to our cannabis program manager for some updates.
Okay, thank you, Director Turner.
Hello, this is, this is Andrew Amalong, the cannabis program manager.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just a few updates on the status of the cannabis program. We currently have 123 pending projects, and as you know, we, these projects go through four stages, a completeness review, agency and tribal review, a SEQA review, and then a PC review, where we prepare the staff reports and attachments in preparation for planning commission hearing. In our stage one completeness review, we currently have 52 projects. They are not deemed complete at this time. They're still awaiting documents. We have two projects that have recently been deemed complete and have moved into agency and tribal review, and we have 57 projects that are still currently working through the SEQA analysis and environmental review, which is kind of the crux of the process. And then we have 11 projects that have moved forward into stage four that are getting prepared for either a planning commission hearing or a zoning administrator hearing for minor use permits. With that said, though, we do have a handful of projects among those that we have not heard anything from the applicants in quite a while. We've been working on letters that we're sending out to applicants to see where they're at. We have heard back from a handful. We have 11 projects that are currently on hold. The applicants either do not have the money or resources to pursue certain aspects that pretty much deem their project incomplete. So with that said, we have another 25 projects that we just, we're still struggling to get ahold of the applicants. They're potentially, I don't want to use the word dead, but we're, they're not moving forward at this moment because they're, they're just stalled on issues, and they're incomplete, and, you know, we haven't really heard back from them. We also have six projects that, over the growing season, have been recognized working with code enforcement, the sheriff's department. They have violations of high severity, so we are looking into potentially recommendations on revocation and seeing if that's the appropriate course of action. Furthermore, we've been working with our consultants at Laco to update all of our templates for staff reports and initial studies. We are expanding upon the initial studies. In the past, staff has primarily focused on SEQA categories that would require mitigation measures. Those are the, the aspects that we really focus on. We're expanding upon that to really touch upon in more depth on all sections of the analysis. So you're going to have much more robust initial studies moving forward, in addition to having the hydrology reports peer reviewed, which you're going to hear a little bit more about here coming up. With that said, we also have 19 projects total, either approved or pending, that fall within the farmland protection zone, which, according to ordinance 3103, I believe, are required to convert from outdoor cultivation to indoor. With those, we are currently working with three that are actively pursuing that. However, we do have a handful that we have not received any updated plans, and the deadline to have that done is approaching soon, I believe, May of 2023. So we will keep you updated on that, so.
And so they have until May to actually notify you if they're going to make that conversion?
Yes, it's, it's coming, it's coming up pretty quickly. They should have submitted their plans by now, so that's why it's concerning that these projects haven't submitted any updates. Of our approved projects. updates. Of our approved projects, though, we are seeing a lot of opt outs, projects that are choosing not to cultivate. We will see if those projects continue to operate in the future. That some of these projects may fall into that category to where, you know, I mean, these are all business ventures and some businesses succeed and some do not. So.
Okay.
I was going to ask you about that last point. Is there any way to quantify how many have opted out or?
Yes, there is. I can get you that number. I believe I brought it to the commission at one point because it came up on another project. But I do not have that figure off the top of my head, though. So it's, I think it was roughly like 20 to 30 that opted out and then 20 to 30 that reduced their cultivation size. So.
Okay. Any other questions for Andrew? Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right.
All right. And it time is now 9:31. We will go ahead and take up our 9:30 item presentation by Laco principal geologist Christine Manhart, PGCHGQSP slash DQISP regarding hydrology report review. Good morning.
Good morning. They're like Pokemon, got to catch them all.
I, you know, I was like, that probably doesn't make any sense to anybody else. But here we are.
I want to start by apologizing. I, at the fairy tale end of this cold that everybody's got, and my voice hasn't come back yet. So if you need me to repeat anything, just ask. Like you said, my name is Christine Manhart. I have, I'll just give you a little bit of my background. I have bachelor's degrees in geology and oceanography and master's work in geology from Humboldt State University. I've worked at Laco for about 11 years and I'm the principal geologist. I am California state licensed professional geologist, certified hydrogeologist, and certified engineering geologist. So I, I want to keep this a little bit more informal and do mostly Q and A because I know you guys have a lot of questions. But I want to start with a little bit of introduction to what we've got going on here. First of all, one of the things that I want to point out in doing some of the peer reviews that I've done for Lake County hydrology report so far is that there's, there's, there's a difference between surface water hydrology and groundwater hydrology. Surface water hydrology is very well understood by a lot of basic engineering principles and mechanics. Basically flow through a pipe. Surface water hydrology works very similar to that, and it's very well modeled. It follows very standard engineering principles. Flow is driven primarily by gravity and by friction. And there, and one of the biggest differences between the two is that you can see what's going on for the most part. In the groundwater, you know, you can put a pipe in the ground and you can take measurements and make tests. And you can do that at points A, B, and C, and have a basic general idea of what might be going on at those points. And you know nothing about what's going on in between them. You can't see what's going on. You don't know what variations there are in the ground between any of those points. And all you can do is make assumptions and use those assumptions to drive conclusions. The flow is driven by pressure differentials rather than primarily by gravity. So you can have a point where water appears to flow uphill because it's, because a lower elevational point may be under a higher pressure than a higher elevational point. These are some of the fun things that we get to work with. And you have the added problem with the equations that govern our science are driven by assumptions that are almost never met in nature. So kind of a little historical perspective, the mathematicians in the 1890s decided that they could model how groundwater flows. And they developed these gigantic, beautiful equations filled with partial differential functions that you can never solve in real life. You just never have the level of detail and the data that you need to actually solve these things. So in the 30s and 40s, a bunch of engineers and the first generation of hydrogeologists made approximations to the solving of these equations by developing these assumptions. And these assumptions include things like the aquifer is infinite in extent, and the parameters such as hydraulic conductivity and transitivity, you may have heard these terms, we use these all the time to govern or to determine how an aquifer is working. Well, the assumptions are that those parameters are unchanging in both depth and lateral distance. I mean, it's obvious that the earth doesn't work that way. So these assumptions are violated by the time you go out the door. What, where, where this becomes an art is in figuring out which assumptions are more significant in which circumstances. Sometimes it's okay if you violate this set of assumptions a little bit. Other times, you might want to violate these set of assumptions because they're more significant. They have a more significant impact on what, how the outcome, on what outcome the, you get, and whether or not that is actually relevant at all to what's going on in the ground. So it's, it's a balancing act between what you can find out, the amount of information you can get, the, the assumptions that you're going to violate, and trying to approximate reality. So that's where this becomes really more of an art than a science. And it's, it's the, the, it's the practitioner's experience in modeling these things that come into play here. The way that our geology and engineering codes were developed, engineers are perfectly within their rights to do this work. However, a lot of engineers who are doing this work don't have necessarily groundwater hydrology experience. And they're applying surface water hydrology, physics, and engineering principles to it. And they don't always work out right. They don't necessarily have an understanding for the nuance. And so it's, you need to make sure that the people who are doing this work actually have the experience and the knowledge and the background to make the, to draw the conclusions that they're going to be drawing. Because that's what you need at the end of the day. You need us to draw a conclusion and put our signature and a stamp on it. But you need, but we, as an industry, need to make sure that the people who are doing the work have the appropriate background to be able to do it and not just the right by law. So I developed, and I believe you guys all got a copy of, some guidelines and a checklist, those are for both practitioners and planning staff to go over to, and it's basically the, the general contents of a report that is purporting to answer these questions. There's nothing special about this. This is basic science. This is a base, these are basic report guidelines. And I drew from many different agencies that have put these together. Oregon has a very good program. I think I got some from the state of Michigan. There's, there's several groups, both state and industry groups that have put together different guidelines, and I drew from all of those, to put together a set of, of contents that would allow a planter or planning staff to look at this. And they're not going to be able to judge the correctness or the accuracy of a practitioner's work. But they can look at, at the contents and they can say, it's likely that the practitioner submitted sufficient information to support their conclusions. Whether or not it's right is a different matter. But at least you can know whether or not they've done the homework to start out. And just to kind of go over them in general, it's, you know, the project description. So a lot of times, and I've, I've done this kind of work in Humboldt County as well. And what I hear is that, well, the planning staff has the project description. My opinion is that anybody that's doing any kind of technical report for a SEQA document should expect that their report might be peer reviewed. It doesn't matter if it's a geological report, or an ARC survey, or bio assessment, whatever it is, any of, any practitioner doing a technical report should expect a peer review. And they should expect that the peer reviewer is not going to have the level of knowledge that the planning staff might have. They're not going to have the project description or the project application in front of them. They're going to have that document. So that document needs to be a standalone document. It needs to not presume that the reader has that background information at the top of their head or easily attainable. It's regional, regional and local geology. Ever, all of their conclusions are going to be based on what the local and regional geology is. That should be well described. And that's generally very well available by numerous online state local resources. A hydrogeological conceptual model, this is basically our story. How does the planned use fit into the rest of the area that it's going to be sitting in? What are the other users? What are, who are, who else is using groundwater? Who is using surface water? I mean, we've got, it's easy to get records for who has spring and surface water diversions because those need to be addressed as well. What are the groundwater dependent ecosystems that might be in the same area that this new project is proposing well for? It also is, this also needs to include a generalized water budget. And I'm not talking about any kind of in-depth research grade budget here. This is basic ins and outs. The ins are primarily going to be precipitation, maybe stream underflow if it's in an appropriate area for that. Out, the outputs are going to be other known users, evapotranspiration, especially here in Lake County. That's a huge issue. And there are huge variations between a normal year and a drought year. And so those need to be addressed. This section will cover the items that are under your ordinance 30, I'm sorry, 3106. And this would cover points A, A dot A and A dot B that ask these reports to cover the total water availability as well as the recharge. All of this will go into this hydrogeograph, hydrogeological conceptual model. There needs to be a description of the well in a well completion report. So many of these reports that I've been reviewing don't have a well completion report. And I can't evaluate, nobody can evaluate what this well is drilled in, what kind of aquifer it's likely drilled in without a well completion report. That's just very, very basic. And then it needs to draw a conclusion. So the, a conclusion that would fit the need of the ordinance A point C would be whether or not this well will have a negative impact on the surrounding areas. There's the added complication of the Big, Big Valley Basin. So that is a sigma regulated basin. For projects that are within sigma regulated basins, they need to further demonstrate that the project will not have deleterious effects on any of the identified sustainability indices. And for this valley, for this basin, those include chronic lowering of groundwater elevation, reduction of groundwater storage, degraded water quality, land subsidence, and depletion of interconnected surface waters. So really, again, these are all basic points that go into, that should go into this kind of document. So the, the guidelines that I have are, they're nothing special. They're just the basic, have you, have you sufficiently documented your conclusion? So that, that's all I've got prepared. And I'm, would love to just kind of go with questions and answers that you may have.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Christine?
Sure. So it's kind of question more like comment or a question. But some of the reports that I've seen, sometimes it looks like they just kind of get a over, like picture of what kind of the area is like. And then they make an assumption that, oh, it's this, it has to be this type of soil. So then this is the, the consistency of it. And then they kind of generate the report based on like some assumptions. But I don't know if some hydrologists, like they actually go and take a sample, or do they just get their information based on the well reports? And what the description of the soil that they encountered when they were drilling the well? So that's just kind of like what I've seen in some of the reports. And how these geologists or hydrologists make their conclusions as to what that well, as to what the, the area where that well is, is like, and how much water they, they were able to get, or just the assumptions that they make in the reports is, that's kind of how I've been seeing some of these reports.
Yeah, absolutely. And you get a lot of information from a well completion report. Some are better than others. Some drillers are very good at documenting the stratigraphy, the soil that they encountered while drilling the well, others not so much. One of the biggest things that I've seen is people drawing conclusions about whether or not it's in a confined or an unconfined aquifer without really adequately supporting it. And then everything that falls out, everything that comes out subsequent to that in the report falls out of the assumptions that you can make based on that one thing. And I'm not always, I don't always agree with what they're saying. Because like, okay, so if you have an unconfined aquifer, generally what that gives you is a smaller radius of influence. With a confined aquifer, the, the radius of influence tends to be much broader. So there tends to be a, consultants have a tendency to kind of skew towards an unconfined aquifer in the absence of anything really supportive. So when we're looking at a well completion report, frequent, mostly the drillers will, will record the, the static water level. In general, if the static water level is above the well screen, we assume that the well is under pressure. And that generally means that it's a confined aquifer. There's a lot of play in that, as you can imagine. You know, there's degrees of confined. Confined isn't necessarily fully confined. There's also semi confined, you know, because why make this easy? But there's, but in the absence of doing any kind of pumping test, which virtually no one does because they're really expensive, they tend to draw conclusions that further the goal rather than following the science real, or at least they're not documenting the science adequately to show that they're not just kind of furthering their goal. Because it's in, it's in the applicant's best interest to have as narrow a radius of influence as possible. Because if I only have to show that I'm not influencing anything that's in a 300 foot radius, that's a much different animal than showing that I'm not influencing anything that's in a 2,000 foot radius. But without doing a pumping test, you really cannot make any conclusions about lateral extent. And I see this all the time where people are misusing processes to determine a radius of influence without having a pumping test. Because the, the main, this one main method that I see over and over again, absolutely requires having two, at least two observation points, preferably three, which means that you're generally going to have to drill an observation well and conduct a pumping test over time. And that's a very expensive proposition. I don't even think it's necessarily net required everywhere. But where you have a sensitive area, where you have an area that's near, that's either in or adjacent to a sigma basin, it absolutely should be required. I don't want to get too into the weeds of, you know, how the, the actual processes work because it gets ugly really quick. But people are making generalizations that really aren't supported. And that's kind of one of, one of the big things that I've been seeing.
So when you say pumping, does that kind of refer to gallons per minute?
Well.
Yes and no.
Two things, two things. I think what you're getting at is this unit issue.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's a separate issue.
Okay.
When I'm talking about a pumping test is what we do is we put pressure transducers in a well, both a pumping well and preferably an observation well, which is screened in an, in, you know, somewhat of the same area, screened in an interval that we would expect to find an impact if there's going to be one. And it's, but it's just being used for observation. So we put these pressure transducers, and that allows us to monitor water level. And then we actually physically pump water out of the well over a period of time. We can do it in a multitude of ways and for various periods of time. In the best of all possible circumstances, we would keep pumping water until the well's stabilized. And we would pump it at a rate equivalent to what the planned uses. So if a, if a, if a project is planning to use 10 gallons a minute, we would pump the well at 10 gallons a minute. Well, you can imagine that if we're pumping water for 24 hours, 30, 36, 72 hours at 10 gallons a minute, that's a lot of water that then has to be dealt with. So, you know, there's a lot, so there's a lot of moving parts and there's a lot of expense. These things have to be monitored all the time. You know, so this is, this is kind of a big deal to do one of these. But that is literally the only way that you can get data that allows you to draw a conclusion about what is happening outside the immediate vicinity of your well.
And are there criteria that you would recommend to either commissioners or planning staff regarding when an observation well must be drilled in these so-called sensitive areas? Are there, are there some mileposts to, because we rarely see a required?
No, you don't.
Observation well.
Because nobody wants to do it.
Right.
Let me answer, get to your question first, so I don't lose track, but I don't want to lose track of you. Okay, so this unit thing is a, it's, it's a deal, and it's one of those things that makes me want to bang my head against the wall. Because this is like basic. You don't just throw all these different units out there in a report without providing some kind of equivalency. So I understand that irrigation is typically thought of in terms So, I understand that irrigation is typically thought of in terms of inches per plant, per acre, whatever, but, you know, these are smart people doing these reports, they can do the math. So they need to provide some kind of equivalency. So if their irrigation section is talking about this method of irrigation will use two inches per plant, per whatever, per month, or per day, whatever, they need to turn that around into an estimated water use in gallons per day, gallons per month, acre-feet per year, do the conversions for you, so that you guys aren't getting out your calculator going, how, or the calculator going, how many gallons are in acre-feet again? You know, because that's, that's just unfair. What I tell my staff all the time is that your, your report is not a scavenger hunt, you should not make your reader go trying to figure these things out, you know, all of this stuff needs to be clearly laid out. So there needs to be equivalent units used throughout. And so if somebody's going to talk about irrigation in terms of inches per plant per day, they need to throw in what the equivalent use over a period of time is, in units that they're using in other places, because when they're talking about their water budgets and evapotranspiration and ins and outs, they're going to be talking in gallons per month, gallons per day, gallons per year, acre-feet per year. And in this science, our numbers get really, really big really fast. So the acre-feet per year is a very handy unit to use, but you need to show what the equivalencies are along the way.
Right.
Now, we get into this problem of dictating means and methods. So regulatory bodies cannot dictate means and methods to a practitioner. So that's kind of where it starts to get a little bit hazy. So, there needs to be a way of determining that the practitioner has done the required work and sufficiently made their case without dictating the means and methods. That said, if it's sensitive, if it's sensitive, you need to know what the, what's happening with that well and how it's affecting the area and around it, and you cannot do that without an observation well. You just can't.
That's one of the things we hear most about from people that are usually opposed to an application, they're in agriculture themselves, and they're concerned that there will be an effect on their wells, based on the activities of this approved, presumably approved grow. And we're very sensitive to that, but we also wrestle with how do we determine that without getting into the complicated equations and all the rest.
Yeah, and that's one of the sticky points.
What would you in general describe as a sensitive area?
Well, definitely adjacent to or within the area of influence of the sigma-regulated basin, absolutely. For the rest of it, it's gray. And we're, I work primarily in Humboldt County, we're doing, we're dealing with that now. You know, what areas are sensitive, what areas are already at the sustainable limit? And we don't have the science to really be able to quantify that. So, it, part of it gets into well density, so how many other wells are in a general area? That, that information's easily obtained for the most part, that's on, you know, Sigma maintains a really great database for that, that's easy to use, DWR has one as well. And that, that will show you in nice, you know, color-gritted survey boundaries on what the well density is. So that's one way of looking at it, but we don't have the background knowledge to be able to say, this area with 15 wells currently in existence is impacted, but this area with five wells may be more impacted. You know, there's just no way to make that determination at this point.
Thank you.
And kind of going off of that same topic, when we do have a neighbor or somebody that's adjacent to the project, whatever project we're talking about, we've had cases where they're like, A, I'm concerned about my, my well, so kind of like what we were talking about now, and would that well, could that well be used if that property owner wanted to see the, the...
Absolutely.
Yeah, the effects of what would happen?
Yeah.
Those could be used as observation wells, right?
It absolutely can. You know, there's a, there's a little bit of fine tuning, you know, we, because like the well couldn't be, they would have to stop pumping from the well for 24 hours, you know, if they've got a tank that they can use for a few days, that would be ideal. All we have to do is drop a pressure transducer down the hole while the pumping test is going on, and then we'll retrieve it at the end, and, you know, that's all we need to do. If there's, if there are existing wells close enough, we can absolutely do that.
That's interesting.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, and also, for example, like, we have a lot of agriculture in certain areas, specifically with like vineyards, so to see, just to, I don't know if those are, how those are getting monitored and what effects those might have to that, that specific region, if it contributes to the, how they contribute to the drought and what effects it's causing like on Lake County, especially for those, such large grows, it's just a, just a thought, like, what, how are those getting monitored, and if there's a certain type of monitoring going on to prove any of that?
The winery industry is a much, has a much stronger lobby than the cannabis industry. My understanding is that Mendocino County is just starting the barest whisper of possibly thinking about maybe looking at, maybe, I'm not even going to say anymore, because I, you know, it's a very, very touchy subject in most counties. And the, the winery industry is generally, the agriculture is not being monitored, certainly is not being monitored like anybody's talking about monitoring cannabis. I don't know much about what the water usage is in wineries comparing to, in comparison to in orchards or cannabis or other agricultural crops, but I do know that it's, it's starting to be thought about.
Yeah, because I mean, in California, especially with the drought that's been going on, just how all of that plays, you know, with, with the geology that we have here in California, and the prolonged droughts that we have, I mean luckily now we're getting some rain, but, I mean, I, it's definitely something, that's probably why, or the reason why it started becoming a subject, because we haven't had rain in so long.
Right.
So, it's just, we have to kind of treat everybody the same, because I mean, water is important, it's such a great resource, especially for the population that we have in the state. So, to just kind of see if it's really worth it, like, you know, what, and what can be done to actually get a number, monitor it, and not just, you know, let it slide under the rug.
Yeah, you know, from the 30,000-foot perspective, all the water's related. So, but, you know, it's, it's gonna, it's a completely different animal to get into the, the monitoring and the regulating of anything that's, that's winery-related.
This, this line of questioning interests me, the, one of the things that we deal with more and more as a commission here, as the number of applications and grows, grows, is cumulative effects. And there are a lot of ways to define that, but particularly with respect to water. And every hydrology report that I've read since we started requiring more detailed reports indicates that plenty of water for this project and the surrounding wells, but there might be three more projects in the pipeline behind the one we're approving, and I don't know when we reach that line, I'm layperson.
Yeah, I mean, at what point do you say, okay, we've got these 10 projects through, but Mr. 11, sorry, you're one step, you're one project over the line?
That's a tough call.
And it is, because it gets back down to what I was talking about with the, the background information, we just don't have it. We don't have the information that allows us to say, this is the threshold, and say this is a hard, this is the hard stop. It would be nice to say, okay, we're going to be monitoring general water levels over the course of the year, and when we see a sustained drop of 10%, we're going to take these actions. But we don't know whether that 10% is significant. We don't know if that's, if, if, we don't know if maybe 5% was actually where a, a level of significance, or maybe we could go all the way to 30%. We just don't have the information to allow us to say that.
Yeah, I think, I think the comment that I have is, is a, you know, this is definitely a topic that's really hard to wrap, wrap your head around in terms of all the parts that are moving. And I know about a decade ago, the tribe I worked for, they looked at all the wells in the Big Valley Basin, and a lot of them didn't have the completion report, there was all of these things that just, there was no standard basically, what we were finding out, and trying to understand the impact of, the cumulative impact, how to understand that. And so, so the concerns I always have is, is looking at the reports, if you see so many, they all start to look the same, you know, and, and then at what point, like, the point John's making is, is critical, is, is when are we hitting that threshold?
Right.
And trying to understand when there's too much happening, and I think that's something at the time the tribe was trying to understand in terms of all of the impacts, mostly I think at the time it was vineyards that we're looking at, and, and how that's going to impact us 20 years down the road, you know, and so, I think it's important to, the information you're talking about and presented to us is important for us to understand and try to understand and retain and learn even more, because it's just, it's just a lot to think about when you're looking at it on paper and trying to decipher how accurate, and then understanding what standards being used, who, who are the people doing the report? There's so much background that needs to be done, and it's, it's important to know these keys to look at when reviewing the report, so I appreciate your comments, all of the things that you're sharing with us, some of the, the terms that kind of cause a buzz for me that I need to better understand is, is important to, you know, understanding the reports when I see them, so I want to thank you for your time and all the information you're presenting to us. So that's just a comment I wanted to make, kind of trying to understand this and hearing this discussion, you know, a decade ago about the groundwater in the county, what's the impact, and, and trying to have a big picture understanding of what's going on, so I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
I found, I agree with my colleague, it's been a very valuable conversation, and it'd be nice to have your contact information.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, I don't have any further comments or questions either. I appreciate you guys giving us the handout and you taking the time today and kind of shedding some light on this, on this topic that we see a lot of.
For sure, yeah.
And Andrew mentioned something earlier about these reports that we will be receiving are now all going to be peer reviewed, is that, did I misunderstand that, or?
No, we, we have about, I think, 10 or 11 in the cycle so far that we're in the middle of peer reviewing. I think the first three are about ready to come back to you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, do you have anything else to say?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine.
Feel free to contact me if you have any other questions.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we, we already went over our department updates. Director Turner, anything else you want to add before I adjourn the meeting? Okay, excellent, thank you everyone, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 10:03, thank you.